So. Yeah, everybody, we have B-Dog right here in front of me. Hello, B-Dog.
Hello.
B-Dog, B-Dog.
If you guys need anything pulled up on a computer in a jiffy, just ask B-Dog. You can comment us to pull up anything. Send me a link. I don't care. We have Kevin Butera. Hello, Kevin.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. So, um, we got the logo behind me, everybody.
Nice.
Becoming very professional here. Uh, please live audio call and please live comment so we can talk about whatever you'd like to speak about. So we always start this off with remember when. So like to say, uh, remember when, and I believe you mentioned a couple of things here. Esmond Bridge. So it's Esmond Street. B-Dog, on the map, get me Esmond Street. What's up, Kevin?
No, I mean, what really caught my fancy, uh, last week or two weeks ago when you did it last was talking about some of the changes that have, uh, occurred in Smithfield history. That's really changed some of the face, some of the, uh, involvements from the community that really has changed things over time. And I got a couple of years on you guys, maybe, maybe not B-Dog as much as you, but, but, uh, there he is. Um, so, uh, you know, one, one of the biggest things I remember growing up, um, I'm gonna tell you, I'm fifty-nine, so I, I graduated Smithfield High School in nineteen eighty-three. Some of you guys weren't even a thought then, but whatever. So biggest change that I remember as a kid was two ninety-five coming in. Route two ninety-five was completed through Smithfield in nineteen seventy-five. Some of that might not make any sense to you guys, but back then, when it came right through, it took a whole bunch of businesses away from Route forty-four. There used to be an old pet store that was a, a, a house. I couldn't find a photo of it. It was pretty much a house with a porch. I remember going up and looking at all the animals and stuff, so that was taken away and it was, it was kind of a heartfelt to me and my family because my grandparents' house was, uh, taken over by eminent domain. They were right over about the Clover Turnoff on two ninety-five north, um, up on the hill there. There's still a foundation up there unless that guy's cleared it off. He's building some development up there now. But that two ninety-five change was a big change in the history of two, of Smithfield. Um, again, there's a bunch of other stuff we can talk about, but what tickled my fancy, uh, was Nick and B-Dog coming up with, uh, history of things that have changed. Um, I can, you know, rattle up a couple. I'll let Nick take, take the reins, but two ninety-five to me and some of the other older taxpayers of Smithfield would probably remember those days that was a big change. And then that led to the crossings and yada yada. So, um, I would say that that was something that should have been mentioned, uh, as the history of change the face of Smithfield.
Definitely. And I think that two ninety-five making it so Smithfield's only like twenty minutes to Attleboro, twenty minutes to, you know, the Cranston now before it was all side roads. So obviously a huge deal. Look at, we call it, uh, I call it a ledge cut. When you can see the rock, like near Route seven and everything. What do you think? Did B-Dog get any ideas?
Yeah, yeah, we can also mention, you know, you said it's centrally located. I mean, that really was probably designed because how big of a mill town it was when it was founded in the eighteen hundreds. They needed to be able to ship the products everywhere.
So Nick mentions a good point, the access, because we used to, to drive Route one sixteen. We would take one sixteen down to go south to the beaches and stuff. You're right. Access to Warwick was easier, access to Attleboro.
It's by design.
Yeah, and when, when it opened up, you were the only one on the road. That's how I learned how to drive back in those days was on two ninety-five. You were the only ones on the road.
When, when they opened up two ninety-five, what was the speed limit? It must have been a hu-.
That's, that's really interesting you say that. Now cars didn't drive as fast back then, but they started a motto because of two ninety-five and, and back in the day, not just in Rhode Island, but it was kind of a bigger thing. Fifty-five saves lives. They didn't want cars going over fifty-five because it caused too much problems when there was accidents. Now they go eighty.
Didn't they, they made it a federal mandate in the seventies that you couldn't go federal law over fifty-five and some states like Colorado would ignore it and the feds would sue them. They would, I guess, take their funds away until they would yet.
Yo, B-Dog, you're not just a pretty face, huh?
So, B-Dog.
That was finally overturned in the nineties though, I believe, right?
That's correct, yeah.
B-Dog, show me the yellow Dairy Queen slash cream. We, remember we got the live ended. We didn't get to cover this. Okay. Does anybody remember this? Uh, uh, Kevin, please give us a location on where you believe this was.
I think, I'm pretty sure that's just about where the, um, Suzie Hughes with the gas station.
Mary Lou's.
Mary Lou's, yes. There was, uh, the, the mobile. Then I believe it was right next to mobile on the right, just about where that pump, there's a, a water pump station there. It was just about there. So that was a big time back then when we used to, um, get done with playing Little League and, and different sports. The coaches used to take us over there for ice cream as a team. We'd all go over there after the game, um, and, and have ice cream, you know, back then it was a quarter for, for, for ice cream, but even though that was still a lot then, but yeah, I remember that. That changed a lot of it when that went away. Yeah.
There it is, waving by, everybody.
No, can you tell me, was the Dairy Cream like a precursor to Dairy Queen?
Oh, that's, I don't, you know, it could have been a precursor to the Queen Band. I don't know.
Yeah, I often, I think Dairy Queen is the modern chain now where you can get the blizzards or whatever. But I believe that yellow building was Dairy Cream. So I remember my father using.
Like an ancestor kind of, right? It evolved into Dairy Queen.
They, they, yeah, they, who knows what happened. They got, they got federal funding and they became Dairy Queen. But, uh, we were talking about two ninety-five. The property I grew up on got eminent domain by two ninety-five. It wasn't that big of a parcel, but, uh, there's an old story of the Fidelity property where I believe it was a man named Joe Mallow got eminent domained really hard and lost in court at Fidelity. Uh, but that was a big deal. If you guys were around back then, it just seemed to, uh, be a big story. What's up, Kevin?
One of the big factors that Fidelity did get it, um, was at the time, there was a lack of, uh, uh, jobs. Uh, job creation in the state of Rhode Island was very low. Um, so when Fidelity said they would move in three thousand employees, the state went, oh, great, yep, let's do it. Um, not that it was a negative thing. There was some people that were affected. Um, they, they wanted it to be a totally a green campus. So they didn't want to see any rooftops of any buildings or any houses from the main building, which I think was one oh one when first came in, uh, which now has been donated to Bryant. But, uh, it's a beautiful piece of land up there and, yeah, it was, uh, it was, that, that was really the driving force was the three thousand employees that they, they promised to bring to the state of Rhode Island. That's how they got in.
If you guys ever, it is private property, so you, you know, you don't want to be trespassing on it, but I'll, I'll take it in a second, B-Dog. If you go to see how large the parking garages are at Fidelity, there is many, many employees, even after the pandemic, people work from home. There's a lot of people that work at Fidelity, a lot of Mass, millions of Massachusetts plate running there in the morning up Route seven. Okay, so let's see. So go to Bryant, yeah, see the star you got, buddy? See Sedexo? No, what the hell that's about, um?
That's now gonna be that other place now.
What you're gonna do is, no, 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 go down to Parenti's.
Where are we?
So right, see my finger?
Oh, yeah, there you are.
You can see that they gave them, I believe that's, no, 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 up so north.
Parenti's.
No, I know, but we're trying to get to the building.
Oh, right there, yeah, yeah, yeah.
See where it says corporate office? I, listen, they, no, no.
Where you, where are you going, B-Dog?
That's what I'm saying.
Show me the whole place.
No, no, no.
Go, go down a little bit. Yeah, yeah.
B-Dog.
Yeah, yeah.
Near the Yellow Star. It's the first building closest to Bryant. I just wanted to zoom a little bit there to show that that's where the Bryant kids can now walk to get to the new campus. If you go on Route seven, you see they added a little island in there in front of Bryant. This summer they cut up all the concrete because they're putting like new pressure pads and a pedestrian walkway. And you'll see Bryant kids with backpacks walking into the woods ominously, but they're going to their campus. They have a new small campus there. I'm, you know, I'm sure they have a few classes already.
They, they moved all of their, uh, student financials, student aides. All of the faculty offices were moved out of the unit structure building up to the new building in Fidelity. That new, the unit structure building is the big one with the dome and right there. That's, that's now got more classrooms coming into it. So all of the staff was moved over there. There's some studies up there on the Fidelity campus, but it's mostly, uh, um, it's mostly employees supporting the, the students that need financial aid and things like that, so.
I've got two last things for remember when. I'm gonna move on to the next section. Uh, was there a place called Major Video where Sienna is currently, where we have like the urgent care? It was, I believe it was a place called Major Video that had a, like a nudie section and it was all video rentals.
There's excitement video.
We had excitement. So that, yeah, that was.
Of course you would.
So we had excitement video where it was had this big sign like parking in back, even though you have to pull in where everybody sees and pull out where everybody sees anyway. It's tough left to make out of there. So it's like, what were you doing over there? Or it's like, I was just going to the barber shop.
Well, I mean, you could wear like a trench coat and then sunglasses and maybe get away with it.
Excit- excitement video, excitement video is gone, but we had a place called Major Video, which was, uh, you know, where the urgent care is, uh, currently. Okay, so.
You know, there was something called mutual destruction that if you did recognize someone in there and they saw you.
Same, so you're explaining the same thing with nuclear bombs. If I nuke you, you nuke me. We're both dead. If I, if I see my coworker there, he sees me there, we're both dead.
Say anything to you, yeah.
It's funny you say that, but Blockbuster Video was a, was a big thing back in Smithfield days.
There was something else before Blockbuster two, not the major. There was something else before, it was like, um, ah, what the hell was the name of it? It was right before Blockbuster. It was in the same spot.
You know what an idiot would say? Rum for a pet center?
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 that's now, that's now.
I know, that's why I said an idiot would say.
But there was, before it was Blockbuster Video. It wasn't earlier. It was like, like something else, like another rental store.
I don't, I don't, you guys wouldn't, but Blockbuster Video was big in Smithfield.
I never go to Blockbuster.
And then there was many late fees I had to pay, right? But, uh, yeah, that was a change too.
Definitely busted your, it's called Bank Buster, right?
So guys, the per, the perfect day back in the day would be at night, you go to Blockbuster Video and you walk out and there would always be a big crowd over at the movie theater. That was the big hang, that, it's like that corner, you know? And it was like right, I don't even know it was there before the subway, but they had, you know, the Blockbuster. It's now the gym, guys. Is Planet Fitness still there? Yeah.
I think if Nick takes some of the money that he has underneath his mattress and he opens up a athletic center that could have like a bowling alley or roller skating, um, I have, uh, some young children in my family that, um, you know, a little bit of a thing for me saying that they don't really have things in Smithfield to do. I'm finding out that they're kind of hanging around in parking lots and stuff and I'm like, what's, what good can come of that? So what else they do? Well, they start to go to Providence and go to nightclub. So I'm like, well, that's because Smithfield used to have a bowling alley, which I think was called Hots. We don't have that. We don't have a movie theater anymore. We don't have roller skating. We don't have any of that kind of events. So what they did this weekend, they went to Cranston to the bowling alley because in the bowling alley, it has bowling, it has pool, it has arcades. And there's a band and a bar there. They're not drinking age, but they can go in there and play the activities. They don't, they can't drink at the bar because they get caught at the bar, which is good. But they're going there to Cranston instead of spending their time and money in Smithfield. So Nick's gonna open up, I heard, an athletic center in Smithfield and he's gonna have a whole bunch of activities for the students, kids to do.
So what we're, yes, what we're doing that is it's the blue building on Esmond Street. They now, they did just vote to keep revamping it, but I was voting, can we please update it and put in a youth center there? So, you know, computers, if kids want to do, uh, computer gaming, or if they want to do like dancing or bowling or, you know, some type of somewhat physical activity, everybody can take part in, where it's a nice big parklot and everything. And it's right in the center-ish of town. It's the blue building pulled up on the map because I went to the town meeting where they were voting on it.
It's a great idea.
What's the name of the building?
Uh, Es- Esmond, Esmond Rec Center.
Yeah, I guess, sorry, that was an old bowling alley, just saying.
When I was a kid, I would say that.
B-Dog, it's been, it's, oh, wait one second, Kevin. B-Dog, you've got to be kidding me. It hasn't been a rec center for a hundred years.
Well, what's the name of that? I'm asking the name of the building.
I thought it was Esmond Rec Center, E- E- Esmond, um.
What's the name of the building?
It doesn't have a name. It's just also go to Esmond Street.
Alright, then where do I find it? Okay.
The part, the park on Esmond Street that you always go to. And stop typing with one hand. I always tell you, you gotta type with two hands. Yeah, see Glass, America.
If I could jump in, yes. When I was a kid, we used to go bowling. We also played knock hockey there.
B-Dog, it's, no, you're so wrong. B-Dog, how do you, you live right there? How do you know where it is?
Back up.
Alright, go to Esmond Street Bridge. We're really gonna.
Was it the place?
No, Nick has a good point though. That, that's a, that's an opportunity to create events for kids to, to do.
Up Esmond Street, you don't know Esmond Street? Zoom into little train icon and get me street view. It's, look at my finger. Yeah, that's.
There you go.
Give me street view.
It's coming along.
And so this, so Kevin, uh, now that, now that everything is.
There it is.
There it is. Uh, what are you doing? We were looking at.
Is it the one? This is the one.
This is it, yes.
It looks like a house.
Alright, so now that everything is, that's over. Kevin, was this an old bowling alley?
It was a bowling alley. My mother used to bowl there too. A lot of Esmond people and Smithfield people there. When I remember going there and playing knock hockey. And you'd play, uh, different monopolies and games like that. And it would give you something to do after school and on the weekends. I used to go there on Saturdays. I'd walk from, I used to live on Waterman Avenue. I'd walk over there and we, we, we'd have an event to do.
Speaking of that, hey, go to the map. Where does, where does Farnham Pike switch to Waterman Ave? I believe it's at the.
Post office maybe?
Yeah, see.
I don't know.
Oh, it's Waterman Ave here. Grow up a little bit and zoom in a bit.
It's a good, it's a good, it's a good question.
You zoom into the wrong street. Go to the right. That's not one, that's not Farnham Pike. That's Farnham Pike. Yeah, zoom in. We gotta see the name.
When does it change?
Looking for Waterman Ave, we're in changes.
Yeah, you gotta zoom in to see the name, right?
When does a boat become a ship?
Yeah, I know, but we gotta find the name of it. I know that's it, but I want to see where it's named right now.
Okay.
Yeah, why is it not have a label on it?
So it's not my fault.
Don't know. It's a good question, Nick.
Yeah, cl- click on this, just click on, uh, the street and it should give it to you. Farnham Pike, okay, just keep going south. Until we get to, I believe, you know, I.
I don't even know if.
I'm gonna bet you.
Waterman.
Well, at, right here at the park, I believe it switches. So now switch, yeah, switch to, go back, what's the? Uh, two Farnham Pike, okay, so it is at Esmond Street. Okay, see Early Eats?
Yeah.
What is Early Eats? Is that a breakfast place? This is right at the.
I don't know what that is.
It's right at Cumberland Farms here, guys. Cumberland Farms on Waterman Ave, Esmond, uh, Early Eats. How do I not know about this? Remember the?
Oh, the new pizza place that opened up?
It was bacon and beans for a bit and it was like a wiener place for a bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Why does everybody get kicked out of there? They can't keep it going? What's going? Is that a bad location? I mean, what's going on?
Uh, you gotta make it more hip, right? Gotta be more active. You know, put some music blasting and get, get it to be a hipper, get it to be more exciting instead of just a.
Didn't we have a crepe place in town? Remember crepes?
Was that same building?
Eh, no, not the same building, but another one. I remember as a kid, do we have a place called Golden Goose?
It's a Chinese place, I think, right?
Everything that's golden thinks it's Chinese.
No, no, I think you.
I was thinking of back over there, you know, that the, the Coaches is now gone. I don't know if it's still on the map, but now they got a, now they got a, um, Italian, Italian social place that's opening up is gonna be indoor bocce.
Oh, wow.
You gotta see the building now. I think you're too far up.
You're going to my.
But if you go by it now, it's getting close to being completed. They just built a big addition on it. And it's gonna be a, uh,
Flavor Smart.
Social club, Italian social club, members only. Um, I think they'll let social members in too, but they're gonna have, uh, indoor, uh, bocce in there. If anybody's interested in becoming a bocce player, you can do it in Smithfield now.
I think it sounds, sounds like they're gonna have their own little club going there. Uh, so, okay. Um, let me just make sure I got through everything, okay? Oh, the last thing I want to mention, kind of a negative story. Please, this, I cannot find this on news anymore. I remember being in middle school and this happened. We had a terrorist in town. Do you remember this? Mo- I remember his all, you won't even find it on the news. I was looking last night. His name is Mohammed Yusuf Malawala. And he was at the N E T T S Driving School across from Seven Cedars Farm. And they had, uh, you found it? I think they arrested this guy. Yep, look at, I remembered this from like twenty years. What year was it? Just seventeen, okay. Mohammed Yusuf Malawala. He, so he was in the Smithfield N E T T S and they reported the guy because he kept saying he wanted to drive straight and fast and wasn't interested in knowing how to back up. Look.
Learning the.
Highlight this for everybody.
Two thousand and one.
Yeah, that was, two thousand and one was nine eleven also.
Nine eleven, alright, so no.
Oh, it was on, oh, I was, yeah, so.
Let's see, the fine art of driving.
It's a fine art for sure. No interest in learning the fine art of driving. Actually, I had no interest in learning how to back up.
Yeah. And why do you need to know that if you're gonna do?
Well, because I guess he was just gonna supposed to go straight and fast into something terrorist-like.
Yeah, so you wanted to come right to the chase.
They get catching, so that's.
So that's good. So, okay, so we finish that. So now, guys, I'd like to bring you up to some modern news. Um, let's address the, uh, elephant in the room. Do we have construction on two ninety-five north and south at Route seven? We do. And, and we all have a merge. Can we please pull up the map on, uh, Farnham Pike and two ninety-five? They have, they have us merging down to two lanes on a turn, on a blind turn. I don't want to give the state, I know the state do, does this professionally, but we need an arrow board on the straightaway before the turn because we can only see the arrow last second.
This area right here?
Yes, B-Dog. So right where, uh, yeah.
This is the bridge.
Yep, so right, slightly north of it, they have an arrow board and they move the lanes over, but you can't see it. I mean, you're not gonna see on the map because they go in there in real life, but you can't see it because it's on a turn. So last second, all the tractor trailers and stuff are moving over. So we are not gonna stand for this Smithfield, so, um, rise up.
Didn't you want to bring up the bridge collapse that you said back in the seventies?
Oh, that's, that's back to history stuff. I think he's more in the modern times now.
Bring that up. Well, we'll, we'll find the guy that collapsed. There was a dump truck, I remember. So we'll find the guy that was in the truck. We'll get him on eventually. Alright, so the new merge on two ninety-five. So we're getting a new bridge on Route seven, everybody. The Route seven, two ninety-five bridge is gonna be new. They're doing roadwork day. You can see they have all the stuff set up, so it'll be nice. I don't know how long it'll take, but oh, we have a new construction, um, it might be private, but it's one sixteen and one oh four. We do have D Gregorio there. So they're doing something, I believe, uh, uh, somebody tipped off Sue Baron. It could be Garage. So, you know, not anything that we could use.
Or digging the hill, like going up the hill.
Digging the hill. It kind of sucks because that wasn't, it, it's just such a nice hill that's untouched, but you know, people own it. They get the right to develop it. Also, Piz, Bizteca Steakhouse on Farnham Pike. The sign's been up there for about five years.
I know.
Go to street, go to street view and get it right now.
So that's funny because, uh, they were gonna like open right when the pandemic started and like that.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah. You are in a different state.
That is not right. Okay.
Yeah, but I, I gotta, I, I ask you something, Brian. I know we're online right now.
Well, back to your Route seven and, uh, two ninety-five. Do you like that new, uh, ice cream place and pizza place, the Scoops? I think, well, I forget the name of it. Uh, Coffee Cream or whatever. It's, uh, the new pizza. It used to be a golf and, uh, driving range.
Okay, you were talking about, yeah, what's it called? Nice Slice or something?
Yeah, do you, have you been there?
Slice and, I went to Slice and Scoop.
Did you like it?
It's called, yes, I like Slice and Scoop, but for some reason, uh, the people I'm hanging out with don't want to go there because they're like pizza connoisseurs. They didn't think it was top notch. I mean, either way.
I haven't had a pizza there.
It's nice to treat yourself once in a while to like a slice of pizza and a scoop of ice cream. Not something you should be doing every day, but if you, if you go on, uh, Too Good To Go app, they always give away bags at the end of the day for like five bucks. You get a big bag of all the leftover stuff.
No shit.
So that's a cool thing that Slice and Scoop is doing. Alright, B-Dog, let's see it. Give me street view, buddy. This is right across the street from.
Yeah.
Lash Resort.
It doesn't show up on Google Maps.
Yeah.
When it's not open, so.
Yes, well, that, that's what it is.
There it is.
So, um, yes, that's Bizteca Steakhouse. They, they get the outside painted. Inside it, it says, uh, sorry, Chop House. How about this, every guys, everybody in this room right now and everybody that comes on this podcast, when that place is open, I'm buying everybody a steak or filet mignon, whatever shrimp dishes they got, but we're gonna do that. Mark my words.
I'm with B-Dog on that one.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, um.
That's a great piece of property. I don't know why, really, nothing seems to have survived over the years there.
Those formerly box seats.
And then before that, uh, G and Pizza, uh, that owned the G and Pizza in Esmond, to, he, he closed that, sold that, and then he, he took all his money and went up to Chapacha, but he also opened up that and he put a ton of money into it and it didn't survive. I don't know why businesses don't survive there. It's a great piece of property. There's plenty of parking. I think that'd be a great athletic center for the town of Smithfield, but.
So, so, Ca- Kevin, tell me, you, you kind of briefly touched upon it, but what you're saying is that you have, uh, uh, children or grandchildren or whatever that there's no youth center for kids to go that is close to home. They have to go to Cranston to go bowling or something like that. Smithfield is turning into a big row of banks and corporate offices. You're saying where, why aren't we taking care of our own Smithfield residents and young adults, right?
Uh, one hundred percent. Uh, uh, we should all be trying to find investors to get more, um, activities for youths to do. They're leaving Smithfield at nine o'clock at night to go to other towns to find something to do. Right? Back when I grew up, you had bowling, you had the theater. Um, there's, Deerfield's nice during the day. That's been a beautiful park. That wasn't around when I was younger. So that's a great, great activity spot for during the day when they're doing sports and stuff. But a- after six o'clock, where do, uh, where does an eighteen, twenty-year-old kid go?
Well.
They're not gonna stay in Smithfield. Just saying, where's the closest bowling alley? I mean, where's the closest roller skating? East Providence?
I guess the nearest place I can think of is Lincoln Mall. They, they got the cinemas and the arcade with the bowling alley there. It is Lincoln though, you know what I mean?
That's not too bad.
Smithfield.
It's, it's not, you know, it's not too bad, but it's like, you know, I mean, why, we should, uh, there's no small arcade or some, uh, place like that. What do you guys?
Still taking ca- uh, tax dollars from our town and putting them in Lincoln.
I don't think you really want to hear, well, you're, I don't know if you have children yet, but when you become a parent, I don't want to hear my children go into Providence or even Cranston, not to knock those places. I'd rather have them stay in a Smithfield.
You'd rather be in, them be in a familiar spot. They know people around the area and stuff like that. And it's, they're right down the street. I understand. Um, so, uh, big one I want to ask. We've all been driving by this our whole lives. You may not have even noticed. What the hell is Dog Warm? Dog, pull up Cedar Swamp Road. It says horse wash?
It was.
So what do you, if you're, if you're pedaling around with a horse, you can pull it and it's like a drive-through for horses? Like what is this place?
Don't know, but it survived the pandemic. It's still there.
So I believe they either make or assemble, yeah, zoom in to see, right here, Warm and Fuzzy, go down, south.
That's a good question. I always look at that sign and wonder what it is.
That's a house, sorry.
I think they really do.
Oh, that's a Warm and Fuzzy Animal, yeah, they used to do, uh, Warm and Fuzzy Animal Adventure. So I think they would do birthday parties where they have like rabbits and like dogs and stuff that don't have rabies. And you can have like a bunch of critter, like woodland critters do a birthday party where the kids can have animals crawl on there. So, yeah, that would warm it, Warm and Fuzzy Animal Adventures. Alright, so go south a little bit.
Okay.
Do you go to Thirsty Beaver? Do you like that place?
Yeah, Thirsty Beaver is nice.
Zoom into Dog Warm USA. We want street view.
I really think he washes horses.
Jesus. So, but I'm, who, who's driving by with a horse? Okay, zoom in. Okay, so it's been the same logo. Now, this is not a, not, if you're the owners of this place, like, we support you or whatever, but see, uh, it's kind of, uh, overexposed, but if you, B-Dog, get your mouse and circle the dog over there, zoom in. There's a dog with a vest on. So I guess if you, if you, so this is what I was thinking. If you buy this vest on Amazon.
Oh, I see him up here.
If you, if you live right next to Thirsty Beaver and you buy that vest, I'll go back to there. If you buy that dog vest, they probably get that vest, ship it to Atlanta, Georgia, ship it to Milwaukee, then it gets to your house, but it's right next to you because that's how, that's how like big shipping works, you know what I mean?
Right.
So I believe we have a place that makes dog warming jackets here in town. If anybody has any idea of what this place is, who owns it maybe, or they want to talk about it, like, they've been there since I was, uh, old enough to remember. I mean,
Has anybody purchased? Has anybody bought one of those vests? That'd be nice to know.
Can I go in there? Get a dog vest? Okay, so that's a, that's a, that's a cool spot.
B-Dog, you want one?
Um, I mean, yeah, I could put one on. Yeah, I could wear it. That's cool.
How's the temperature in here, everybody? Temperature?
Well, here's a dog, so here's a vest.
Yeah. I'm good. Oh, we talked about things to do though, fun things to do. How about, um, they opened up Camp Shepherd now in Smithfield as a park?
They did open up Camp Shepherd, so that's a.
Is it, is, can you go there?
Yeah, it's, it's a hiking, hiking spot. Um, I've been there. There's the abandoned building still there. Uh.
You guys mentioned that. There might be some hauntedness in there.
Yeah.
So, uh.
It's a beautiful piece of property. It's a great asset.
Wally's pulling that up.
Here.
Oh, there you go.
It is something for them to do during the day, definitely.
I mean, yeah, the trail goes all the way around the lake.
Absolutely gorgeous land.
Yeah, so that's open now to use and, uh, it's got great hiking in there.
Yeah, I, I haven't checked it out, but we, we talked about going up there, just check it out.
This is what some of the areas look like, yeah.
Look how beautiful that is.
Complete with a modern day fjord where the glacier has cut into the ledge.
It's right, right there. Look at that.
If, if, if this guy would, taking the picture pointed to the right, you could see the fjord, as we say. Okay. I don't think I want to say, well, it's not really on a positive note, but it's a cool thing for us to know. I remember three robberies in this town. Uh, what did I write down here? Black, remember the Blackbird Farm Stand got robbed and they posted the video of the dude robbing it and his, the top of it, not even trying to be weird, the top of his ash crack came out while he was a bit of an overweight dude stealing meat from a farm stand. They had a video in there.
Right here.
He's bending over, looking at the camera with his butt out. It was two of the guys. Ron's Spaghetti House, remember?
Ron's Spaghetti House.
That place got robbed and three on seven, like a week after they opened, they got robbed. It's like.[1652.88]
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
You know what I mean, like, I don't think, uh, these probably aren't Smithfield residents doing this, but.
Uh, I mean, are they near any buildings that may host people that are from outside of town?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm sure, I mean, we get people, uh, uh, I mean, we have, uh, you know, we have a bunch of different housing projects here, right? Alright, so what's this, it was rented?
Fortunately, it feels like we're pretty, pretty safe in Smithfield, I mean, it, it, my whole life, we haven't felt that sometimes, someone come in from other, other parts of the state and try to steal or cause problems and one thing that, you know, we didn't have back in the day is we have now is cameras everywhere. Um, there's pros and cons to that, sometimes it feels like you don't have the privacy, but it does help deter, uh, thefts and there was some cars that were broken into maybe six, seven months ago in Smithfield-Greenville area, which then made me and my family decide to get cameras. We don't have a lot, but we don't want someone breaking in our cars either, so we do have cameras now. Uh, a lot of people in a lot of places have cameras, when I grew up, there was no cameras. So you could go around a back-up building and hang out and you didn't have cameras on you, so the privacy's a little challenging, but I think it's a good thing for safety.
I do remember some instances too of, um, a few years ago, there was somebody that came with like a sledgehammer and tried to knock on, down a door somewhere in Smithfield, like Ridge Road, that area.
A little ago on Ridge Road, they had that guy, knocking on doors.
Yeah, now, what else there was too, there was, um, uh, I've heard, I've heard of a few different robberies actually, so.
What the hell just drove by?
I don't know.
Sounds like a plow.
Alright, well, then we'll just keep going.
That was a car.
Yeah, we'll just keep going, okay, so, a couple of things.
I won't try to, uh, hold you up here because I'm on camera, so I won't.
Do you know, guys, this is an amazing fact, I don't think that anybody knows this. You guys probably don't know, do you know we have two such a bagels in this town? Are we the only place with such a bagels? Google map me such a bagel, I know there's two in Smithfield, are there any in any other town? This might be a world record, most such a bagels in one town, two.
Didn't know that.
Kevin, are you aware of such a bagel?
Uh, I am, but I didn't know there was two.
So what's the one you're familiar with?
The one that's over in there and, uh, right near Cellos.
Seven-Eleven.
There is one.
Seven-Eleven this area.
There's one right near Blackie's Restaurant, it's a such a bagel.
Oh, yeah, that's right near the pe- the, yeah, the gas station.
Yeah, I know where this is.
That's right.
Yep.
When you zoom out, B-Dog, is there only two in the world? We might be hosting the only two in the world such a bagel.
I don't know about that, let's see. This cafe, there's two, oh, maybe there is only two in the world.
Two in the world, guys, right here.
Oh, that's interesting.
Well, we're bagel lovers.
Are they, yeah, they're a Smithfield company, I would imagine then, right?
Yeah, it's gotta be, um, I believe the woman that owned such a bagel was doing, hosting the yoga studio also on forty-four near Austin Ave. So you've been around for a little bit. So, um, okay, so, a couple last things, uh, I believe we'll cover, we'll fully cover this in another episode, but we do have Hampton City at the Fidelity property here that we investigated and we found foundations. Do you have any info on Hampton City, Kevin?
No, I don't, I remember the name, I remember the name, but I don't know the history.
From what I've heard, it was an old leper colony possibly, they actually put the people that may have had leprosy in this area, uh, you can throw it up right now in the.
Alright, so this is at the Fidelity, uh, property here, um, and it is in between like Stanley Tree and the power lines, but it's, uh, deep in the woods there and I believe, and they say lepers, but there wasn't a lot of written history about it, it was a small farming village and there is an active well that we found, there's the old foundations, stone stairs and things like that, you can see uh, cleared land where they used to farm.
Forced to live in exile.
Ah, yes, I believe it was, I believe it was because of the time period, it was more likely a loyalist colony, meaning when we're going through the Revolutionary War, the people that wanted to say loyal to Britain, when things were getting hot and attacks happening, they had their own little spot there, and then it it got abandoned.
That's very interesting to, to think about the, um, how history really does repeat itself, how now we have two different sides of government that support things and back then, there were people, you know, the patriots, and then there were the ones that says, no, I wanna stay with England, why are you guys trying to break away, so?
Yeah, it's, it just feels like things got, in a way, things got more violent, a lot easier back then, it's because they, if the colonists had Instagram to show each other how great life was and how similar they were, they probably wouldn't have had that problem. They, I mean, they may have had the early form of Facebook, if you think about it, with letters.
Well, I would say gossip probably was a big thing, like word of mouth, it was a big thing.
It was all religion.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that, everything, so, whole society, the Puritans, this is the pilgrims would, would live around this area, Roger Williams came here to get away from them, right?
Yeah, it was all about religion back, yeah, still is, to some degree.
Uh, three cool facts here, when we think of the, what's the three main ponds we think of, guys, I think of Stump, Georgetown, Waterman. You notice that, it's like the three elements, like each one's good for one thing. Waterman Pond, no horsepower limit, you can take an ocean barge in there if you wanted to, you can have the biggest engine you want on there, but no public access, where you have to know somebody with property to put a boat in. Georgetown Pond also, you can put boats in there, but Waterman's known for seeing people tubing when you go down forty-four, see people tubing and stuff. Georgetown's good for swimming, okay, it does have a, we live in an issue with drownings, but we have a lot of swimming, we have the, it's the only place we have the beach and the life, active lifeguard on duty for swimming, and then Stump, good for fishing, where they actually take the time to stock it with good fish to go fishing for every year, so it's like, the three ponds we got are pretty good, what's up?
Can I say that, um, I don't know if other people have had the same experience, but I do feel that there is something strange about Georgetown Pond, especially at night, whether night you wanna call it supernatural or not, but I have been there at night more than a few times and I've seen strange lights over the, the lake, like, weren't boats, they were above the water.
Yeah, you're not the first that have mentioned, you're not, you're not the first that have mentioned that. There's definitely some cold springs running through there, so people trying to swim across, they don't realize that they get caught in a cold spring and it can really bring them down. Um, there is a memorial, a positive thing happening that's been put down in Georgetown for those who've lost their lives at that pond. Uh, some people were, will remember my brothers, um, and there's, there is a memorial down there and this, uh, season, I think they're gonna stop putting bricks around it with names on it, so that's a positive thing that's looking out for those that we lost and our loved ones in the history there at Georgetown. But others have mentioned the lights, uh, B-Dog, yeah.
I've seen them, it, and you know what, it's strange because like, I'm normally a very big science guy, but I, I can't explain, I've seen it more than once, I've been there and it's like, it comes from behind the trees and it almost looks like a drone, which I, that's my only explanation, is what it could be, is a drone. But it was floating over the water, flying around as a light, very interesting.
Once, when you have an experience, if it's an experience that you have, you can't take it away from you, but I do know that someone that lives off that house shines some lights above it when they see people down there at night, just to cause a.
Oh, so that, so that could be what's going on then, okay.
Yeah, so Georgetown Pond is, just so you guys know, if you wanna catch us, this crew, we will be at, at least B-Dog, I, and what's our buddy's name that's gonna be at the memorial this week?
I should we mention his name?
Really good, anyway, um, a bunch of us are gonna be at the memorial this spring for Georgetown Pond, uh, every, every spring.
I'll film a video for the YouTube channel.
We go to the memorial for the drownings, which I believe are in the twenties now, and, and if, uh, you guys watch one of B-Dog's video, we'll, we'll give the description of why we believe these drownings are happening. Mixture of, uh, you know, cold temperatures, uh, mix, uh, mixture of the islands being there, they swim to the island and all that stuff, but.
Right, and, uh, actually, when the memorial does happen, when they're gonna do the, um, the, the data to remember them, I, we'll film a tribute video for them as well.
Yes, one hundred percent, brother. So, uh, the last section we got here, I believe I'm calling it like comparisons or something like that, and then we'll do like, uh, final statements, okay, so anything that we didn't get to mention, we can mention at the end. But, uh, here, here, this is like the, the fun section that we make the clips out of and stuff like that, okay, um, we'll do verses, okay? What's better after a Little League game? Gigi's Scoops on Esmond Street or Dell's next to the middle school? Where are we going to cool off after a hot summer game at like seven P M, eight P M, or something like that?
Dell's for sure, yeah.
Guys, 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 what about the ice, ice cream? You guys know what I'm talking about.
Look, you see the size of me, dude, I don't eat a lot of ice cream, I'm not.
Someone did say that that dog wash place, they do wash hor- it's wash horse blankets is what they do over there. Wash horse blankets is what they specialize in.
That, that's not on the live stream, is it?
No, I wasn't sure if someone did it on, over on their livestream, but this was personally, someone personally sent it in to me.
You know what's weird?
I thought they were gonna tell me to watch my language if I swore.
You know what?
Yeah, you can swear.
I'm, alright, one second, guys, let me mute this, mute this, mute this. We do have a couple comments I didn't get to see because it's not working on the computer, but, um.
I had the same issue, it wasn't showing up on mine.
Holly saying the Crepes place was great, it was behind the A and W, it moved to Providence or Pawtucket. Why'd they wanna leave our great town, they make excellent coats for dogs and horses. Uh, so Holly knows a bit about dog warm, okay, so thank you, Holly, that's amazing. Uh, Patrick Taylor, who commented last livestream, thanks Patrick, changes at the bridge, he said, I believe what he's saying is, I didn't mention the construction yet, but yes, Patrick, we are getting a new Route seven bridge over two ninety-five, and I wanna be the first one to, to drive on it, be the first guy, I mean, hey, honestly, I don't wanna say it, but how fast sometimes do we go up that bridge, because it's uphill and it's so wide?
Talking about?
No, Route seven over two ninety-five, because you're going uphill and it's the coolest spot, because when you're going up Route seven over two ninety-five north, you can see the horizon, you can't see any trees or buildings, like you're going to the sky, it's like the coolest thing ever, you can see it on street view.
Can I say, uh, one thing about that area though, and the George Washington Bridge in particular? Uh.
Oops.
The, it's alright, the speed limit over there is fifty and consistently, it seems that people go about thirty-five, so a good like fifteen miles under the speed limit, it seems like, and it's one lane, it holds up traffic the whole way, why can't they just put a passing lane in? They put all that in, in, just, construction in to widen the road, and they didn't put a passing lane in, just, they let people get around?
Well, I mean.
Most of all the, almost all the roads are under-engineered, for how many cars are on it now, there's no doubt about it.
One person going thirty-five on a fifty mile an hour speed limit road holds everybody up the entire way, like going all the way down.
We used to not have rush hour on one sixteen and Route seven, that area over there, we now have rush hour. And they put in the hotels, I, I, I mean, this is the thing, guys, like, yeah, we want more tax money coming in, but our taxes never go down, so I'm usually torn between, do we build more in the town, I like seeing wilderness in the town, but you don't wanna tell people they can't live here, so it's like, you gotta put up new developments eventually, people own land here that could put development, so it's tough to say, do you want more in town, less, I mean, we get more traffic, you know what I mean? They denied the cannabis shop in town, which was kind of, I think was a kind of a big deal, imagine having a cannabis shop in here, like, people would have been coming from other towns that didn't have that to come here, but then it's like, well, does that, does that bring more traffic, does it bring crime, like, you know what I mean? It's, it's a half and half, and now we're gonna drive somewhere else to go get it, you know what I mean? Um, alright, so.
It is a tough one though, what, what's that Smithfield Pete's, is there gonna be a lot of cars now from that big warehouse they're building?
Yeah, the rumor is it's a warehouse, I would believe it'd be more of commercial vehicles, which isn't ma- they're big vehicles, but it's not many, so when you have a place like that come in, it'll be like a large dump truck or a large flatbed will come in a couple times a day.
Trailers, right.
There's so many trucks now, when you go on Route seven or one sixteen, the amount of tra- like, truck, trailer, construction trucks is unbelievable.
Well, they were gonna put, they wanted to put citizens there, citizens wanted Smithfield. Yeah, instead of Johnston.
Oh, wow.
Citizens, from what I understand, good source, wanted Smithfield. They wanted that area, the, the highway, uh, on and off the ramps were already there. Um, Johnson came and took it right off the map. They had to do a whole bunch of blasting ledges to put it where it is now, and now Johnson has them, which I like that new ramp over there, because I live in Greenville, sometimes I take that new exit off of two ninety-five. Now, might go against what Nick's saying, because there is what, three thousand employees over there, so there's a, there'll be a lot more cars that would have been on Route seven. Um, so, you know, what's, what's, what's better, the residential or commercial, it's a tough one, Nick. You bring up a good point, uh, there's gonna be growth, we need to have places for people to live. Um, but how do you do it respectfully to the neighbors that you're gonna be around and how do you control the traffic? Then they can always make a traffic study that can say, only, only during peak hours will there be traffic back up, that's what they did with the crossings. The crossing, there will be traffic, they didn't say there wouldn't be, but only during peak hours.
That's a good one.
There's a lot of traffic on that area, but.
B-Dog, I see you doing nothing, we're gonna be doing the last couple things here, then we'll do closing arguments. Pull up Google Earth, not Google Maps, Google Earth, and you're gonna go back in time at the crossings and see what it looked like before they built the crossings, this is an interesting one. So, um, while he's doing that, Kevin.
They were gonna try to put a ramp, they wanted to put an on and off ramp into the crossings on two ninety-five. They were told no, they couldn't do it on a federal, a federal ru- uh, highway, you, supposedly at the time, they weren't able to put a ramp off of two ninety-five to go right into the crossings, or come off, come out of there right onto two ninety-five, because they weren't allowed to do it. For, um, private use, they, they weren't gonna do it for private use, supposedly that was the story. But it would have been nice if you had an on and off ramp on two ninety-five into the crossings, it would have taken a lot of traffic off of Route forty-four, there's no doubt about it.
And we've all been caught in that traffic where we're getting off the ramp and we are trying to get into the crossings and it's like.
Interesting fact, Nick, it was the fastest profit-turning mall in the country.
The crossings?
The crossings. Fastest turning profit in the country was Smithfield Crossings.
Hey, guys, Smithfielders love to shop, that's for sure.
Okay, so I'm with the crossings in Smithfield now, on maps.
Okay, wrong, uh, Google Earth, you mean, okay, sorry, buddy, go to, see the history button, uh, no, you don't see it, to the right. Left, right.
Don't see it, you're right.
There.
Weird, that?
Right, right there.
Okay.
You're going to go to, uh, the nineteen ninety-five one, so you can, uh, so you move that, like, yeah, you can scroll it, yep. So you go to two thousand two is when it was built, so if you went to O two. So look, look at ninety-five, look at the guys, nothing there, guys. Where are we going to Alt and Barnes and Nobles, there's no Barnes and Nobles?
Bring it the other way, B-Dog?
Zoom out?
Yeah, so you can see the clo- Clover? It would have been, was it on the, so it's on the lowest section of the Clover, right? Oh, no, it's on that side, okay, that side, alright.
Be it, Kevin, yeah. Wow, and then, uh.
Eighty-five.
Yeah, so it's not even zoomed in, so go to O two, go to O two, you can see it brand new, and there's, I believe they're still building the Coles, look, still building Coles, zoom into Coles. Under construction, see that?
Wow. To the land on the other side, um, of two ninety-five, which now they're trying to do that big residential setup behind, uh, Club Forty-four, which has now been torn down. Club Forty-four was one of the places that everybody went to eat and they all, it was like one of the chairs of Smithfield back in the day, and now it's been torn down, because they wanna put you know, twenty-seven acres back there, whatever, a bunch of three hundred units and, uh, some, some restaurants, freestanding buildings also. There was some discussions off the record when Stop and Shop was put in Smithfield, Shores wanted to purchase that land on the other side of two ninety-five, so they could compete against Stop and Shop. Smartest thing they ever did was to Stop and Shop, landowners said, well, we'll buy the land on the other side of two ninety-five, so I can s- we could stop Shores from coming in to compete against Stop and Shop.
Guys, this is the biggest moment we've ever had in the Smithfield Town meeting, Kevin, you're right, because last meeting, we mentioned the abandoned property on Seville Road, and if you click on it, it says owned by Stop and Shop, one thirty-five Seville Road, we said, why are we having an abandoned house in town? When the house prices are up so high?
We saw that.
Stop and Shop, and I was joking, saying it was a competitor. It all came together today with Kevin.
I mean, that was the discussions, right, it was the discussions, I mean, listen, I'm all about smart business, right?
What are they gonna do with the property?
If you had Shores, they would have competed against Stop and Shop, might have brought, brought the prices down, because right now, Stop and Shop is charges one of the most in the state, in Smithfield.
Property, right here, behind the old, old excitement video, behind Gigi's Scoops.
The red dot, right?
Yep, that's it, that is owned by Stop and Shop.
Well, you know something crazy, the other day, I actually took a drive, uh, down here on the map to the Seville Road, to the pond, and I knew I was facing right here. There may be a way to get in here, maybe, there's a.
Well, no, there's a, there's a driveway at the end on the left that, um, so.
This is where it is, this area.
I think it's all done now, because they were big money, I think they tried to sue everybody in the town and they, they want it right now, and again, if you have land, you have the rights to do things, it just has to be developed good for the neighborhood and good for everybody, but that's gonna be a little bit of a challenge, you're gonna have two entrances off of Esmond Street, one exit only onto forty-four, um, to build back there now. I think they should say, alright, do it, buy that whole other corner out, so you could increase the entrance to to Esmond Street, you'd have more availability for traffic studies to the right of the old Club Forty-four down in that corner with a there, there's a Scoops or there's a Dog Place over there, so then there's that abandoned building that used to have used to have the videos, you could buy exciting videos there, right, so that building's, it's all, it's like falling down, right? So, there is ways of development properly, it's gonna be a little challenge for all of the cars that are gonna be coming in and out of Esmond Street, onto forty-four. But you, you can't stop them, what you could do is control the changes of the uh, ordinance, so they're trying to get twenty-seven acres changed for mixed use, whatever it is, and the guy that's on that last road down there, he's selling it all out, so he's taking his wind, his, 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 his windfall and selling his property out. Um, but there's a lot of, people don't realize there's a lot of wildlife over there too, so if you really wanted to not be happy with it, you'd fight it through the wildlife that's gonna be displaced when that, all those trees come down. But again, I, I, the proper development, it's tough, because if I owned it, I'd wanna do something with it. Um, if, if you look it up now, Nick, I don't think it says that, uh, I don't think it says that Stop and Shop owns it now, that was transferred over to the development people, I don't wanna use their name. Um, but it was, it was smart business back in the day, stop competitors. And that's why we got that land, and now we're against, all these years later, well, what are we gonna do with it? We may as well build affordable housing, so they can fight to get affordable housing in there. Percentage of ten percent of the residential will go affordable, will justify the selling the other units at, um, at, at regular open market rate, and then they might put a Cellos or another freestanding restaurant or whatever, but that's about twenty-seven acres plus, I think, back there, Nick.
I, I wanna say, Kevin, you're a really good speaker, like, you're very collected when you speak, so thank you, and those are all really good points, I did notice the pond on the property though is always an issue with D E M, that you're gonna kill all the frogs and fill them, they never liked that. But, um, you really know your shit, that's why Kevin was on.
No, not as much as you, Nick, I mean, I might, I'm not, you might be better looking to me, I try to be a little taller, I'm definitely older, but, haha, and I like to have fun, hey, how can you not have fun with you two, especially with B-Dog over there? How are you not gonna have fun with this guy over there, come on now?
Every ti- every time he was going like this on the table, you can see the camera shaking, let me see if I can get it on.
Sorry about that.
Like, let me see if I can get his shaking, like.
There he is, yeah, he's shaking over there.
Is that why you're making that face every now and then?
But I'm glad you mentioned the, uh, to have a, maybe a cast at the, uh, memorial. I can't promote enough. It's a wonderful thing for, for people down there. If you guys do plan on that, that, that'd be a wonderful thing to do. And those kind of events, break, feel free to reach out to Nick, B-Dog. Bring up different events, bring up positive events. So we, we can grow the community. And these kind of, these kind of forums allows us to have open talk, right? It shouldn't be looked at as a negative. It shouldn't be, oh, what are they doing out there? No, this is a positive thing. Send messages in. Bring up good stories. We wanna hear good stories. We wanna hear positive news, positive growth for Smithfield. We learn about something negative, we can see about how to make it a positive, right? So feel free to make your comments. We love to hear from the community. That's what this is all about, my family.
That's right. Okay. So guys, the last fifteen minutes, I've been trying to end it with the last section. So just like, let's, okay. So thank you, Kevin. That was an amazing, amazing argument right there. Okay. We just, I just wanted to do a quick, a couple of voting things. We did vote that on a hot summer day after playing Little League, we'd rather go to Dell's than the ice cream shop on Esmond Street. Okay. So Dell's wins that. Um, debatable.
Nick does it, yeah, yeah.
Uh, now, if it is, uh, if we need Chinese food, are we going to Tinsin next to Urgent Care or Rangoon on Farnham Pike? Okay, think about this. Recently I've changed to Tinsin after a really good experience there. Is, uh, how does everybody feel about this?
I'd still say Rangoon. I like the sushi, man. You gotta get that sushi.
Okay. What about you, Kevin?
I, I, I haven't been Tinsin. I gotta go with Rangoon. I, I've heard some, there's been a lot of, all fresh food. I know some workers now that are recently saying come over there and support them. There's some good people over there. I've never had a bad experience over there. Um, I haven't been there in a little bit because I now live in Greenville. It's a big ride, right? From Greenville to Esmond, right? But, uh, I gotta go with Rangoons on that.
We need a, um, uh, sound every time when your vote fails.
Um, now, uh, this is, this is like a sore subject, but what do we like better? When we had fast Freddy's or now that we have the All-Town there? You know, across from the Stop and Shop, across from the McDonald's, you know, behind Little Dave's. Uh, what are we voting for? Did we like Fast Freddy's or do we like the new modern All-Town? I would choose, I like the new modern All-Town because it's, it's updated. So Fast Freddy's was like nostalgic. But you know, need a little bit of update. They did the All-Town and I, I do like it now. Um, I'm assuming most people would probably love the Fast Freddy's, but what, what do you guys think? What did we like?
I like the Fast Freddy's. Uh, uh, well, they changed the name of it, didn't they?
I believe they, uh, it's now All-Town.
All-Town, yeah.
So, yeah, uh, and Kevin, a vote for me, Kevin?
I don't wanna be against Nick all the time here, but I gotta go with Fast Freddy's.
Yeah!
I have to say that it is very clean, All-Town. It's, it's very clean. I have to give them that. Uh, kudos to them. But I gotta go with Fast Freddy's. It's got a trickier, it's funny, a name. It's fun. Yeah. Fast Freddy's. Sorry, Nick.
That's our brother. It's not a competition. It's a vote. So you can go there. And now, um, so I would like to do a vote on the best road we got in town where I look forward to driving on. And which road do I dread driving on? I'd say the best road we got, I think, is not very well known, but right by, um, Old County, uh, Breezy Knoll. I think it's called Breezy Knoll. We have Thurbers Boulevard, which is ultra wide, no bumps. Great little uphill section and downhill is fine too. One little small turn on it. Best, smoothest road we got is Thurbers Boulevard. Worst road I'd like to nominate is Burlingame Road. If you've ever been on that and gotten blinded by headlights on one of the bumps. Because like, there's like, the, the cars come up, they blind you, then you're on a turn. And it's just like, um, you know, it's like, it's not my favorite road to be on. It's in the log road section. So when you go up that way, you're never doing, up to any good anyway. So, yeah, uh, Burlingame Road might be the worst in town. Uh, what, what do you guys think? I mean, it was tough to think of it offhand, but any roads you don't like being on in town? What do you, B-Dog, you go first?
My favorite road, I actually like Mountaindale Road a lot. It's very fun to drive on. Uh, it's serene. It's quiet. Go a lot of ups and downs, good views. I think it's a good little escape.
Okay.
Least favorite, hands down, George Washington Highway, one sixteen. They gotta do something about that in one lane. And people going too slow.
Yeah, George, well, yeah, I guess with the speed limit you gotta make sure, cause you know, alright. Kevin, any ideas or?
You know, I, I haven't yet really thought of this one. I have a heart and soul for Mountaindale Road myself, cause I grew up in that neighborhood and used to go up at all the time. I think I would have to say the, the one I don't like the best and I live on it is Route forty-four. It's just, it's too much business, red lights, banks. I would say Route forty-four is my least exciting road to go on.
Little quick thing to add on that, Kevin. There is a squeeze that all of the people in the area don't like to mention. At that library, we're all squeezed that like we crest the hill and it's four lanes. It really should be like, it's four lanes. And your mirrors are like on other people's mirrors going there. And then you're going downhill and there's a red light. And they, for some reason they got the really nice sidewalks, but that should just be road. You know what I mean? It just, that squeeze is tough, especially if you're not from the Greenville area. You don't like going through the squeeze. Last one here. Um, we're, I'm gonna, I definitely got, I know people have strong ideas about this. Last one here is, uh, we are going grocery shopping. Are we going to Little Dave's? Are we going to Big Dave's or Stop and Shop? So this one's gonna be good. I would probably vote, um, I gotta say, uh, in every situation, I would imagine Little Dave's. Uh, you know, I mean, like you get, you know, I mean, I'm not big on particular, what I'm gonna make. Whatever they got that day, I'll go ahead and get. So easy, so quick. The carriage is a little, even little, like it's like a little, it's like a little, almost like Japanese theme. The carriage is a little, the aisles are little, everything's small. Like two people working there. It's awesome. Yeah, Little Dave's, hell, yeah. So what about you?
Uh, I think for as far as convenience, Little Dave's is good because it's quick. But, I mean, the options, Big Dave's is like the best, most like quality food, especially compared to Stop and Shop, which is like commercialized, you know? So I, I might prefer Big Dave's. That's my, yeah.
Big Dave. Even though, guys, officially it is just called Dave's, but if you live in this town, you know, at the crossings, that's Big Dave's. And behind them at near Fast Freddy's, that's Little Dave's. Okay. What about you, Kevin?
Hands down, Little Dave's. The little carriage, you're in and out. You, you don't go there for spending less money though, right? I went there yesterday. I always said, let's go to Little Dave's. I got the little carriage. I can get in and out. I'm in and out. I love Little Dave's. Love, love, love Little Dave's.
No votes for Stop Shop.
It's just too commercialized.
Stop and Shop's gonna do a lot of stuff right now at the time recording this podcast. I believe the Lakeville location is gonna protest, whatever.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we've had protests, um, at the Stop and Shops. I remember Lincoln and Smithfield had people standing out there saying, don't go in. They don't wanna give us our vacation days. Easily gets political, you know, with protests and with, uh, they're unionized. Okay. So if you're wondering the reason why Market Basket's cheap, Stop and Shops are expensive, is the base level, which I can understand is one's unionized, which means that these people are, which they, everybody deserves a great job or everything. But for this job that could be maybe entry level or whatever, I'm sure you have to have training in things, especially the deli guys. But they, uh, you know, they'll have vacation days or sick, sick days, paid time off where at Market Basket, their prices are very cheap because it's probably, although they might get paid less or they don't have these paid times off and stuff like that. So they haven't unionized. Which, you know, unionization, unionization makes things more expensive, but it's better for you working there. So, you know, depends on what you want. But that's part of the reason why Stop and Shop can go in.
I don't understand one thing, Nick.
What's up, buddy?
How can Stop and Shop in Smithfield charge a different price for the same items five miles away in another Stop and Shop?
Hmm, I think I know, cause I'm, I'm like, I'm like the king of the corporate world here. I mean, look at me. Uh, when they have the guy in his office and his only job is to just do, ru- run the numbers and run demographics or run income. I think that the price of things don't really cost what it costs to make. The price of things is what you can actually get from the people to pay it, right? So like if every, if I could make a million microchips in Taiwan couldn't make it, they'd be cheap, right? Or if I could, if I only, if I just had to only make one a year, like why is a Gucci bag cost a lot? It holds the same as a Stop and Shop bag, right? But it is that you put a name brand on it, it costs more. I believe they might run the numbers in an area that can afford more. They'll charge a little bit more. If they have a Stop and Shop in a lower income area, they may charge less. Uh, the trucking maybe could be a little bit of a deal. I mean, it's right off the highway.
Sounds like price gouging to me.
Well, that brings to the question, is price gouging okay or not? Is it your fault for buying it when it's gouged just because it's convenient, you know? Um, I don't wanna take sides here, but yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not a fan of Stop and Shop, guys. We know the changes they went through. We know that that place meant so much to us when every, we would see people from school there. Everybody went there. It was like a city. It was like a village. You'd go there. I think we had a Dunkin' in there. We had a citizens bank in there. Like it was everything you want. We had a pharmacy in there. It was turned into like its own city. It was like becoming this huge, big deal, right? But, you know, it's sad to see it might be on its way out. You know, they keep putting that poster up, we slashed thousands of prices. I always joke, yeah, by like a cent.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, you know, so, um.
A fraction of a cent maybe.
Yeah. So just, we're gonna do a closing argument here. So I wanna say, you know, I always pay attention to the new developments going on in, what's up?
Just sorry, one other thought. You mentioned, uh, Fast Freddy's uptown. Uh, is B-Dog gonna buy the, uh, Dave's, uh, car wash next door and make it one of the most hopping, bopping, neon light, flashing, music blasting, clean, brand new car washed in the state of Rhode Island? Wouldn't that be awesome, B-Dog?
You know, I think I know a DJ that could play there constantly too.
I'm just saying, something's gonna happen there. And, uh, you know, it's, the, the cow kept giving milk, so you didn't get rid of the cow. I understand that, but it could use a little upgraded.
I know, it's.
It'd be nice if it was a brand new place. I'd go through there now. I didn't go through there because it was so kinda old, right? I was a little scared about the car, right? But bring, bring that alive, B-Dog. That makes money. Open that bad boy up.
I like that. It's a good business venture and you know, I, I could actually use a car wash myself.
So guys, I'm gonna do my, my closing argument, just so you guys know. It means, anything else you wanted to bring up, bring it up. But, uh, don't, don't start talking to me. It's not supposed to be conversation. I'm just gonna do a little rant and end it. Um, yeah, guys, so just be careful about voting in like, you, you always talk about a tax cut when we bring in a new business. I like to keep Smithfield how it is now or quieter. I don't like when they build a bunch of stuff in here. You know, as you get older, that's a thing. When you're young, you're like, oh, build me an arcade, build me that. But as you get older, you're like, oh, I wanna keep it woodsy. I wanna keep the wit trails and stuff. And, um, anybody that wants to come on this show, please definitely reach out to the page. It's this logo right here. Smithfield Town Meeting. Just, uh, YouTube, sorry. Facebook search it. You'll find the profile, accept the friend request and everything. And you can totally come on here and tell me what you think. Uh, these are the only official citizen Smithfield Town Meeting we're going on right now. So you can do it. Did I really mess up?
It's supposed to be meetings with an S because your site is meetings with an S.
I'm gonna draw that in with the, with the whiteout. Okay. So, B-Dog, you have any, anything going on? I mean, you know a lot about the chair. You're a trail connoisseur here. Anything you wanna say to the town, but when we close, how we close out now?
Uh, let's just keep up the, uh, nature trails. Make sure, you know, you always keep the parks clean. Uh, I do notice Smithfield does do a good job. Wolf Hills clean. Uh, Camp Shepherd is in very good condition for being reopened. I just don't wanna see our parks fall into like how Diamond Hill and Cumberland is where, you know, it's neglect. You can see graffiti and people throw trash. So let's keep the, the parks nice and clean.
Yeah. Keep officers Clowanty on the force. All that, all that, right?
Ownership. Ownership, B-Dog, is where I come from. Where, uh, you have a little heart for something that might not be yours. If you dunk in Donuts cup on the, on the ground.
Yep.
Pick it up, right? Ownership. Ownership for where you live. Ownership for the parks and wrecks. Ownership for your neighborhood. It's all about having some ownership. Whether you rent or own the property, have some ownership and respect for yourself and others around you.
I agree.
That was amazing. Dave, this guy's got a real big heart. I really enjoyed my time here with Kevin. Thanks again, B-Dog. Always has work on the computer. We do have to work on your sense of direction when we're on the map though. That's a huge deal. We're gonna talk about that in a little bit. Bye, everybody. Bye, Smithfield. We love you guys. Bye, everybody.
Take it easy.
Bye, see you guys.